Good evening. And welcome to the regular evening of the Council of the City of Long Beach. House 25th and 3rd, 2018, at 7:00 PM. Level roll call, Councilmember Benda.
President.
Councilmember Benda.
Yes.
Councilmember Moore.
President. President.
Vice President Tyler.
Here.
President Aaron. With the recognition of the President of the City of City Manager Michael Tackley, Incorporated Council of Albert Agisces is allowed to salute you as well.
All right. We're going to name both the first meeting for the month of April. And I'd just like to thank everyone for being here. We have a whole house tonight, so just remember to treat everyone with respect. And of course, maintain every cordial. And unless the City Manager to give his report.
Yes, the first thing I'd like to address is there's a lot of social media say about budget that is possibly not to be on the agenda. There's no budget on the agenda. I, as the acting City Manager, prepare the budget along with the city controller or deputy controller. And it's not done, it's not close to done. So we really are not in a position to answer questions or discuss the budget. The budget is due to the Council on the 10th, before we deliver on time. And then, at least, the public on the 20th. So anyone that came out to talk about the budget tonight, I am sorry that they got fair information. But I would recommend that anyone that reads something and comes to a council meeting, go to our website and you can actually pull up the agenda and you'll see what's on and what's not on. That being said, every year around this time of year, we get a lot of concern when people see seals on the beach. Seals belong on the beach. That's something that they do, that's where they rest, that's where they sun themselves. We feel all the time with the Marine Protection Act and with Oceane's out east. And all I am able to tell you is stay away from them. They can actually bite their hand right off. They do attack if approached. So the seals are all fine. If there is an issue, we take care of it right away. And we know the difference between a seal sunning and a seal in distress. The Long Island Division Commission for Aqua for Protection has selected only three communities to participate in a smart sprinkler system lottery. Lycath will be giving away a limited number of free smart irrigation controllers and providing rebates for 250 hours of installation. The way these work is traditional sprinkler system works on a time or a clock. So every day between 5:00 AM and 7:00 AM, they'll put on a sprinkler. This controller actually takes into account the weather. So if we had a day like today, the sprinkler wouldn't go on because it could read the soil and stuff to know that it's not necessary. The city will be hosting a spring break job fair tomorrow, April 4th, from 2:00 to 5:00 at the Town of Kent Center. To apply for some jobs, please be sure to bring full ID, Social Security, health insurance card, and working papers for those under 18. This Thursday, April 5th, from 6:00 to 8:00, at United Healthcare Office in Hempstead, the Long Island Harrison Services will be hosting a forum on fair housing. Discuss that this meeting will be housing employee housing discrimination and your rights and obligations as landlords or tenants. For more information, visit longbeachny.org. We are part of the Estuary Reserve Council. And their next meeting will be April 11th, at the Town of Hempstead, Department of Conservation and Waterways, in Fort Lookout. And you can visit the city's website to view the tentative agenda. As a reminder, Phase 1 of the fully federally funded Army Corps of Emergency Beach Protection project is complete. A contract is expected to be won in this month for Phase 2. The Army Corps in the DC will be hosting a meeting on April 18th at 7:00 PM to discuss the project's next step. The city will be hosting Earth Day in Kennedy Plaza powered by PSV G Long Island on April 22nd. Also that day, the Jellyfish Jamboree Parade will be taking place on the 4th month at 11:30 AM. All participants in the parade will receive a $1000. They'll be good with discounts at all restaurants and businesses. All applications for the parade must be submitted by April 15th. For more information, visit longbeachny.gov/earthday. And finally, we are all are invited to join the evening of poetry with Nassau County Politor Edith D. Dugan, featuring the Barrier Islands homegrown poet, Long Beach native Harold Myer. The event will take place at Stalwart's 101 West Park Avenue on April 27th at 7:00 PM.
Our first item this evening is the public carriage from Resolution Route 82 of Long Beach Park and Forests in front of 68 West Park Avenue towards Batoka Gate, New York.
Good evening.
Mr. Long Beach State, this is Mr. West Park Avenue. This is Long Beach, New York. I'm with the public of Long Beach, Chicago. Okay. I have with me my client, Mr. Yuranyu.
Can I hear you?
Mr. Yuranyu Ranguala. He intends on opening up a convenience store which sells candy gum, cigarettes, lattes, baked products, Cooper products at the premises over here to the street, West Park Avenue. There will be no baby or Cooper products sold on the premises. All people who purchase and buy products that they apply there and take it to their local place of residence wherever they feel like using legal products. Very much aware of how this business needs to be run, of the age limits and the requirements of the people who are buying these types of products. We own a similar store in Oceanside, which has been operating business for six years. We don't expect unusually high volume of people. We expect mostly walk-in, maybe some people stop in and drive by like they do with any other local business. We don't expect anything extraordinary to launch as far as volume. We get deliveries from UPS and FedEx. We expect trucks to come in maybe once or twice a month, or not much more than that.
Once or twice a month from the UPS and FedEx?
No, UPS and FedEx on a regular basis. And maybe if you have to have a larger delivery, maybe it has a specific truck or company delivering it might come a couple of times a month in that way.
And how many employees do you anticipate?
One person will probably be running this store.
And what would be the hours of operation?
10:00 AM to 18:00 PM.
Anyone from the council with any questions?
Good evening. Can you just speak to the protocol for the sale of the vacant condos as well as the special products? Because we have a different set of regulations here in the city of Long Beach. Can you just speak to the criteria? How will these items be sold and to whom will they be sold?
I have my client here, so that's a TCO cell on a regular basis.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Ranguala. It's 3. They used to sell it in Long Beach over the age of 19 before Palatner. Since March, they have changed it to 21. So Oceanside is already 21 to be using, currently they've been selling it for over 21 years of age of people only. So those are the only things. And the stores have two levels. So the top level is going to be only for the tobacco products and all those numbers. And the bottom level is going to be just a convenience store. There will be a sign, 21 years of age or older. Under 21 cannot enter this area. That's it.
And what preventative methods would you use to ensure that minors under 21 will not be engaged in this protective area?
Because there will be a sign, under 21 not allowed in this area. And if somebody comes in, we would ask them if they are over 21 and if they're either idling or entering.
Okay, with anyone from the public? Care to speak for or against this? This is about the parking variance only. We are unable to discriminate against a legal business. So this has to do with the parking variance only. Come on up, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jonathan Natalie, Long Beach. Nothing to do with this particular establishment, particularly when you guys are reviewing a variance of lost parking. You talk about, you probably balked with that owner about a bike rack. My suggestion for going forward with that, it's not realistic to assume every single business in the city is going to have a bike rack. I would ask the city to maybe consider establishing a dedicated fund. So if you are awarding a variance for lost parking, maybe make that a $200 donation toward the fund that would improve the best way to use a bike, you know, bike out whatever sort of bike resource is so that you purchase a bike rack that you need at the city and bulk that you can sidewalk, no funding with it or, you know, any numbers or whatever things that would be a more holistic approach for the president.
So, thank you. I purposely didn't ask about bike racks for this particular business because it is right in fact in the center of the downtown where, as we know, our sidewalks are kind of small. But we have added a bike rack question to the actual form now. And we are streamlining that process to make it a little more uniform for both the businesses and the city at large.
I certainly have no objection to a bike rack. There are numerous bike racks on that part of the parking area. Right from city to city, across the street, you didn't know there are numerous bike racks already and you couldn't without a jack.
And that's why I didn't bring it up because we are a little congested right here in the city. So we need to think about it and we'll get a whole, whole stream state. Anyone else for the parking variance? Okay, seeing none? Next item? Hearing as well?
Okay, on to the regular tally. One of the Resolution Route 82 of Long Beach Park requires a 68 West Park Avenue. It's faculty at the convenience store James McCollum, the site owner. I'm sure there's a resolution authorizing settlement of an action to work for the city of Long Beach against Island County, Long Beach.
Yes, a number of years ago, there was an accident on West Portway where there were witnesses that were placed on the cause of the crash on the Katie family. And our corporation council started litigation. After numerous hearings or meetings, they settled on some $40,000 to, to the city, not by the city.
Any questions from the council? Any comments or questions from the public? Sure, please come on up. Good evening. State your name and address for the record, please.
I'm President of Long Beach. I'm just curious because I've never seen a lawsuit in the agenda before. Or here for the person, like, in some unit we're going to be doing or settling a case?
Well, there's nothing special about the case per se, Mr. Yuranyu. But this is not the first time where we had an item on the agenda at settlement here and where the city is actually the recipient of the money. It's happened at least one other time here at my venue.
So if you want to see, could I just one more?
Anytime there's a settlement over, anytime there's a settlement over $25,000, whether the city is the recipient of the money or whether the city is spending those funds, it must go on the council agenda, pursuant to the charge. The donation is law. Well, it's not under my section of charge, but yes. I guess we have to take the second one. Correct. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none? Next item?
Okay, item 3 is a resolution authorizing the City Manager to turn agreement for engineering services for the Long Beach Range group of projects to amend the budget. Before we go into the side, there's some wording that has happened on this item and five items, so let's get some information to go. And we'll be back into the elements.
Okay, I'll make the motion and the language is a large motion to both items 3 and 4 to, and this is the language that would be added at the end. And be it further resolved, this budget modification set forth in the various clauses above are hereby incorporated by reference and adopted in full. And that would be amending, as I said, both items 3 and item 4. The same language at the very end of the item.
I'll second this.
I'll second.
One, President Moore.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
President Carter.
Yes.
President Moore.
Yes.
Okay, item number 3 is a resolution authorizing City Manager to turn agreement for engineering services for the Long Beach. Okay. Very basically, we found the, well, everyone found those the five hotspots or six hotspots that always flood every time we get any rain. And this is a plan to remediate those hotspots and have proper drainage for all of our streets.
I have a couple questions.
Commissioner? Yeah. Good evening.
Commissioner, in the items, do you identify that areas have been, that there are certain areas that have been identified as chronic flood? While most of us know exactly what those areas are, for the rest of us in the public, why don't you just go over what those areas are and when and as part of what study they were identified specifically?
Okay, these areas were identified by the CRP committee working with the organizing. This was a resident committee, did not have any representation from TPW. But the areas are pretty well known. It's actually just four areas. One is West Park Avenue running from New York to Nevada. One is National Boulevard running from, running from Park down to Broadway, the boardwalk. And one is East Bay Drive. Just give me a second. Is east line between Down by House, we're running from Park Avenue down to the Bay. And the third one is on Riverside Avenue running from Park down to, to the, or, or J.J. Avenue.
And when is the study completed?
This study was done a year or so after Sandy by the CRP committee. I was not present for it. So I have all the details, but this was a project that was assigned to the city through GOSA.
And it's fully reimbursed, correct?
This project is fully reimbursed. The way reimbursement works on the GOSA projects, they are federally funded. So we do not have to bond these projects. One invoice is approved either through the consulting firm or through a contract that eventually did the work. And they will send us a check. Once that check is deposited in the revenue account, a payment will be made directly to the contractor within five days. So the city will see no expense from this.
This is why we're creating that account, is that correct?
Correct. And also, the project is estimated in total to be about $4.4 million. And up to 10% of our internal cost will also be covered and reimbursed by GOSA. That would be my time, the deputy commissioner's time, or anybody else that works on this project with the engineering firms.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I know there are multiple proposals sent in. And because this is an engineering contract, does that mean that if you look at proposals first without looking at the costs? Well, generally, when we do proposals, engineering approach for ourselves, we look at the proposals first, then we open up the cost. However, because this is a federally funded project, we are not allowed to make a recommendation to GOSA based on the cost. We have to make it based on the best, the best proposal, so. And is that for all federal, federally funded? That's for all federally funded projects, and that's actually part of our procurement manual. Okay.
Can you assess a little bit the scope of the work? I mean, is this tie flex, you can just make a tie flex valve?
This will be multiple types of, the first part will be an engineering study. And there'll be multiple types of, and they'll look at, they'll look at tie flex valves as well as other types of valves. They will look at stormwater chambers that separate sand and grit and cans. And they will also be looking at pipework, reconnecting pipework, and also possible pump stations. And that's what the engineering firms for? That's it. The engineering firm will do is they will come back with a series of recommendations in the first part of their study with a design report. We will sit down with GOSA, pick out the things that we think will work best, and then GOSA will look at it and take an approval to proceed. And then they'll do final design. And once the final design is done, it will go out to bid.
Commissioner, jotting down quickly the areas that you described, I just want to clarify, does this also stem to canals on the area from west end and north?
No, there were five areas that were involved. And the canals were like curled, was east line, like between curly and arminically. But we had done a project at that location previously, and that problem on that section has been solved. The things that will solve the flooding on the canals will be when we do the North Shore Bulkhead. The west end will be all the way from New York to Nevada. Probably be some elimination of some of the outfalls to try to go to larger systems, less number of outfalls that will prevent what will tie what backing up into the system. Anyone else on the council? Any questions about engineering services or comments from the public?
Yeah, I have a question.
Just state your name and address for the record.
Captain Riley, Long Beach, New York. I took a look at the GOSA website when I saw this pop up on the agenda. And I'm a little confused about, are we going to stick to exactly what's in this plan? Because it's pretty specific about the four spots, except the fifth one was removed. So it has the four spots, and it also calls out approximately 50 backflow prevention devices. So I want to know, you know, how we come about including lift stations? Did someone talk about that? How is this even set up?
Quite part of it also calls for, if you read further back, if you read further back, part of the calls for the city to do a study, what, these are some of their recommendations. Doesn't mean we should blindly follow those recommendations. If there's a better way to do it, then we should look at that. And that's part of the study that's in there also. So that's why part of the consulting firms will be having to study also.
And then the formula that's on there?
What they, their cost estimates were substantially different than that. The study was $900,000 and construction was 6.9 million. And the construction manager was $550,000. So how does that $4 million account?
Well, it's 4.4 million, and then the engineering study is about $400,000. But some of the money, the CRP projects were Cooper projects. It was the OEM Center, some housing money was a total of $25 billion. And also the North Shore Bulkhead. So GOSA, in me with GOSA, don't do all the different projects and their requirements, but things like locating things in water monitoring from areas, locate some things in full speed, rearranged that part of money. So we're spending the same part of money. We've just moved a little bit more into the North Shore Bulkhead and a little less into the drainage projects. And that's all done, we've had, everyone knows, approved by GOSA this time.
Because they don't appear on the website, if I had any reference to them. And the last thing that you need is New York Horizon, or GOSA coming back and saying, listen, you did what we didn't ask you to do, so we're not going to pay. That's a big concern.
Well, and you do it to us. And the rest of the? Yeah, just let me make myself clear. But each step of the way, we need to get approval from GOSA. So when the design study is done, we're going to give that to GOSA. We're going to sit down with them, we meet with GOSA every week on conference call. We'll go over the design report, and they will come back with recommendations, the things they approve, things they don't approve. We'll go back to the drawing board if there's things they don't approve, and when we do it. And before we go out to bid, the project will have full approval by GOSA.
Correct. Thank you.
Good evening. Just state your name and address for the record.
Eileen Heschin. First, I'd like to thank the people who are using the microphones, very helpful. My question is about timeline. It sounds like lots of studies which are necessary. When would the first valve or whatever go in to help people who are doing flooding? Would it be years away?
How long do you anticipate the study being? I would hope that by the fall of 2018, we would be starting construction. That's how quickly we want to move this along. Great. Sure, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
560 Off Street. I would announce the current situation in the North Shore public area.
Use the microphone.
The North Shore Bulkhead, that you're referencing, that you're being concerned, because I want to know. Few questions. What's the timeline? What's the budget for it? And when do you expect it to start?
The North Shore Bulkhead project, who's concerned about is one of the projects that has started, case anybody in here. That project will probably be in the fall of 2018 also. Tetra Tech, the design engineer, is moving along, is coming back to the next week or two, you will see their engineers down in the canal section doing surveying, measuring the existing bulkhead and doing soil samples. So we hope to also have that contract ready to go out at the same time. These will be two different contracts, and they're coming to work, but that's going to be like going on when the fall comes. To be clear, sir, that's a separate project, this budget.
It's a separate.
Not this, not this budget.
And what are the budget for that?
The budget for the North Shore Bulkhead is $12.5 million. Okay, anybody else? See him yet? Yes. Please state your name and address when you come on up. This is only engineering services for this new project.
Mary Alcavich, Long Beach. I have a question, Mr. Yuranyu. You said that the next tie flex valve in the canal area, that they were done from curly to armin, am I correct?
I don't know if they're all were done. I think we've done very three out of eighty outfalls, as I was trying to talk about. I'm not sure which ones will be able to happen.
Okay, all right. But some of them, I think, don't.
Yes.
But they're not working?
Some are working periodically, some are not working well. It's more of a maintenance issue.
Yeah, we talked about that on the last meeting. When are we going to get that back?
That's what this engineering study is for.
It's got, it's.
To see, to see if there's a better way for us moving forward. Not just to maintain, but maybe there's a better solution than the tie flex valves? The chambers, right?
No.
Okay, yeah, and just on the tie flex valves that we're already, we have a contract out to bid now for bulkhead work. And in that bulkhead contract, we're including a section who are doing tie flex valve changes by an outside contractor. They're much better equipped in terms of getting into the valve. So that should be back sometime in April, and we'll be coming, you know, with a recommendation on that. So that being, it's separate from anything that we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Just state your name again, Mr. McNally.
John McNally, Long Beach. As I'm sure most of you know, I was co-chair of the CRP committee that formulated this plan. A group of residents put in hundreds of hours to come up with recommendations for the city. I'm stoked that this is moving forward first and foremost, but I would just, I guess, ask the Commissioner that has entirely, Gosa's always said that the committee would remain involved in this process moving forward, and at every step of the way, we've heard telling, you know, it's a thankless job to be in, if it was all us, not the John, it's more thankless, I think that he's signed up for. But if we can stop calling ourselves a committee, that's great, I got other things to do in my life, but, you know, it's only committee, it's built together, I haven't been told to just make this bandage. Well, nobody has, but also nobody's telling us anything, so if you could just-
Okay, well, we haven't started any work on the drainage project. When we did do the North Shore Bulkhead, every change we made in the North Shore Bulkhead, we had a meeting with the CRP committee, and several members were there, everybody was invited, those that could make it, make it, and then we actually had people from Gosa there to review the changes. This is the first step in the process of the drainage project. Once we have the design report done, we intend to be with the CRP committee, and it hasn't broken up yet, and you can see what's in the report then.
I mean, I was, sorry, I was at the bulkhead meeting, and it was, the committee was brought in after the decision was made, and after, you know, and there was a big sting of the original estimate was X amount, and all of a sudden we figured out that the engineering report was, or the original estimate was completely off, and, you know, deals were made between, you know, what really gets on the state level, so I'm not, this is not going to, you know, I mean, but it's just a matter of, so I just want to clarify on what roles the committee had moving forward, and, you know, so this was awarded, the committee should be given the notice that this project was awarded, and, you know, we flipped over to three hundred million dollar project, so, you know, some common courtesy from the state or whenever that, yeah, the project that you guys, you know, highly have been awarded. I mean, I hate emails from the committee, what's going on, what are we doing? I don't have answers, just that common courtesy is all there is.
Okay, and just so it's clear too, the engineer you're talking about was not an engineer firm hired by the city, okay? That was an engineering firm, that was hired by Gosa. But we made those changes, those changes were basically dictated to us by Gosa based on the original estimate project. So you have to find another way to do things with the limited amount of funds. This is the first step, as I said, we would hopefully award the engineering services. Gosa has already approved it, and then when they start work, we'll sit down with CRP committee as they move along and share what they have.
Yeah, I mean, I would just ask for a little bit better communication, Gosa or the city, however close, that's all we need. We can be the horns inside if you guys can't, in certain situations, so, you know, it could be helpful to have the committee.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. McNally. Anyone else? Not the engineering? This project, though? Okay, seeing none, next item.
I implore the resolution authorized by the City Management to continue the drainage and construction initiatives and inspection services, the establishment of an office of emergency management for the city, the office and to then project.
Okay, New York Rising Community Reconstruction Program identified the need for OEM to be established in our city. This is really a very important thing that I was putting very hardcore after Sandy. It was, our OEM became the police commissioner's office, which was not equipped for the number of people that were there, nor to disseminate information, nor to plan for the recovery. We've been working on this project for a number of years. The OEM office will actually be in the back of this room, of what well does, and this is really, I think, a tremendously positive thing for the city to control our future.
Good question. Commissioner, can you just describe what an OEM actually does?
Yes, an OEM is an office of emergency management, and we're actually looking at a couple of different things for the OEM. Office of emergency management, you declare an emergency, and then you staff, or in anticipation of an emergency, you staff the OEM. You staff the OEM with key players that would assist the recovery. You have utilities in the room, you have warrant force, you have fire department EMS, so they would make collective decision if you had to, you had a major fire, if you will, at a nursing home. There are so many different logistics that have to be addressed with removing those people and trying to fire at the same time, that you really should have an office of emergency management that would make all the different agencies, bring in all the equipment they have to be. The first night after the storm, I was able to get five hundred quad crews down here, as well as all of the highway lights for the construction on, on Ryan roadways, so we lit up our business system, and we didn't end up with any broken windows. So because we were at, someone over at the NASA can be OEM, we were able to facilitate these. This will make us even more efficient, because someone from the NASA OEM would come to our OEM and relay the information, so we're losing no bodies.
Would this OEM just service the city of Long Beach or the whole Bay Area?
Primarily, it would be the city of Long Beach, but a lot of the things that affect Long Beach, like when we instituted the curfew and the checkpoint, the checkpoints were put to the entire Bay Area. So there are, we do work well together, we have individual agreements which we could institute as we move further along into the procedural end of an OEM, but we would work very closely with all people in the Bay Area. And the other thing is, when the OEM is not being, if the city finances improve to such a degree, it'd be a perp that's to be made, which is called a three-one-one center, which is what people call in with various issues that they have, and they get immediate response. So there is a, not only for horrific instances or emergencies, but also we will try to look at the day-to-day use of all this equipment.
Anything else from the council?
If I understand correctly, the bill, the office would go up on this floor, so this floor will change the layout somewhat?
Yes, the north side of this entry room would be the OEM on the first floor and the second floor. This wall would come out, I believe, to that first partition, so capture more of this room, and it would be a fully functional OEM.
Can you speak to any anticipated additional staffing and costs that are related to this project?
The staffing is based on the emergency, so when we have an emergency, I would be in the OEM, the city manager would be in the OEM, most likely some of the council, and there are no costs associated with us, because we're all salary employees. That's, it doesn't have a day-to-day cost for that. There will be some costs associated with it, but we have to bring in secretaries and people that are unionized, and they're accountable for time and such. But the fortunate thing is, when you open up an OEM, most times you're going to be held up for reimbursement under federal disaster, New York disaster, local disaster, so there are opportunities. We have submitted, just for our snowstorms, we, the government planned state emergencies, we did project tracking of our snow removal, and we submitted a bill, and we'll see if we can pay for that. So we're getting much more tuned to capturing what happens in an event, so that we can put for reimbursement.
Any other questions from the council as well?
Just follow up to Council on one. Would there be recasting of current city staff into the, like, OEM management type position, or would that be a new bill that would have been created?
No, what we did was, the actual original brand, the OEM, came with money for the director of OEM and assistant. We used, we're going to be using our fire commissioner, Scott Hemmings, as well as one of our school course supervisor supervisors, Richie Corvett, as the, as the OEM chairperson and deputy. And they did get a stipend, but it's fully funded for two years, but we took it through and get started. But for the remainder of this year, it will be fully funded through this strain.
Anything else from the council? Any questions about the OEM from the public? Sure, come on up. State your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Sam Pinto, Long Beach. A few questions on the OEM. We're putting it on the sixth floor?
Yes.
Now, a question, why are we putting this on the sixth floor of City Hall? Historically, there's been issues with this building, and there's been issues with getting upstairs, I mean, during Sandy, if you elevated down, the battery generator's not working. And getting up to the sixth floor, people are practically out of heart of that, just to get up here on themselves. Is there any reason why we're doing it here compared to like the second floor of the Recreating Center, which seems more sustainable?
Because we can tie in all existence city services, all of our computer network, we can tie in here. In addition, cabinet engineering, which is the firm we use to develop this, strongly recommended that as the location.
Okay, other question, this sounds a lot more like a emergency operations center compared to an OEM. Is that really what we're dealing with, or we're going to be putting an office of emergency management here? Because what you explained before sounds like an EOC, is what you engage during states of emergency or large disaster event.
Pretty much there is a change with OEMs, and to a certain degree. An OEM is also emergency management and managing a long-term recovery. The OIC is for the emergency, but right now, six years after Sandy, we are still dealing with the long-term recovery, which would be for the OEM.
And just one more question, what was, how did you guys come to picking the directors or assistants directors of this position?
Commissioner Boring, organized, we put out resumes, get interviews, and the selection was made.
How many resumes, do we know? Fifty? All right, so I find it challenging, you're finding people who already have responsibilities in the city, especially during the emergency, like the building department or the police department, having those people now running those departments or running those responsibilities, also now running the EOC, which, or EOM, whatever you want it to be, which historically has been a long-term recovery process, not just a one-day-a-day.
And as such, there are times where we have to introduce people in the city to do two jobs. I'm very familiar with that, because we have one with the personnel.
So, I'm just handling, thank you. Thank you.
When will this start conducted?
No, probably over a four or five month period, because I don't have all the dates in front, and we have to advertise that on the website and several other publications. I can get your names, I just hope I'll put there like that.
Only because I think I'm fairly perceptive and pay attention to a lot of things, and I haven't seen this actual two positions being marketed by the city with job descriptions on the website or anything else like that, so, just wondering. Thank you.
Please just state your name again for the record.
Excuse me, Mr. Stacey, do you remember when you came in, did you have this position?
I don't recall the exact date. I can tell you that the air conditioning in this building wasn't working at the time.
So we'll look on the cell.
So, as you know, I have a couple questions regarding the ancient management. Unfortunately, I know which question doesn't make sense. But in the, in the Gosa, in the Gosa proposal, the staff is to be paid, or is Scott and Rich going to be? And I just don't understand how they can do both jobs. I mean, when nothing happens, you need someone that's an OEM, not the police department fire commissioner. They're all capable, but are they going to be paid in addition to what they're being paid? Because they're two thou, you're making it a two position when it was. He can have three hundred thousand and, three hundred, five hundred thousand dollars for two years. Why not make him a student?
I don't know what I'm saying, but if there was a question.
So it, so you hired Scott and Richie to be partners or senior co, will they be paid as OEM?
Yes, they will, they will receive a certain financial remuneration for the, to take on the additional responsibilities, but it will not be the three hundred thousand. The three hundred, we took out the stipend that we'd been giving them, and repurposed the application to put the money back into the project.
So there's a new application to Gosa?
Yes.
And you have, is that, how's it sent on their website? Have you gotten it informed?
You can hold us, she finds the file website, you can't hold us, she finds the process.
But if you've changed something, we should know that, no? Yes? No?
No, we, pardon me?
So, so Scott and Rich, regardless, could be the head of the OEM, and they will hire staff, or they will not hire staff?
No, they will not hire staff.
I don't understand how this would then be a functional OEM.
Because when, if, if they're busy for something, they will address it as a case-by-case basis. But once Sandy hit, all of us that work for the city will repurpose to a ton of different jobs. And that actually helped in our overall fiscal recovery.
But I'm asking specifically about the Gosa OEM proposal that came from the CRP, that's what we're talking about, because that's what's on the agenda.
Yeah, so Rich and Scott right now are attending a lot of classes relative to OEM and emergency management, to bring them up to speed. They came back with a couple of different procedures that were best practices, and we're working to implement them. So in between his group processes and his supervising the others, when he has downtime, he'll be doing this, between, just like my day. Sometimes I'm doing police, sometimes I'm doing city manager, but.
So, I, I think I understand, so I just want clarity. So instead of hiring a full-time OEM director, the three hundred thousand dollars over the course of two years we would have received as a grant, then we would have had, as a city, fund their salary moving forward?
Salary movement is moving forward.
Moving forward, so instead of doing that, we're utilizing the folks we already have with the talent and the skills, and giving them a small stipend for the additional responsibilities?
Yes, well, both Scott and Rich have been fire chiefs with the city.
No, I'm not questioning their-
No, no, we, we, along the way, all the other, all the other-
No, I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning that. My question is regarding the Gosa grants, how it is rich, and if we change it, where is that, that we change that?
John? And the money that we didn't use, just so that everyone can hear, the money that we didn't use for salaries went back into, to fund the actual project?
That's correct. What we started looking for, first of all, a couple of things. On the OEM office, the project includes a generator on a rooftop that's going to supply all the elevators, so people will be able to get up and down, so we've relooked at all the things we really needed to build it to have operating generators of size for that. We would have had a hundred fifty thousand per year for two years from Gosa. In terms of advertising for the position, we were holding off advertising because it didn't make sense to bring people on, we didn't have an OEM there. Gosa came to us late and said, you know what, if you don't use it, you're going to lose it. So we, on the other direction, we advertised the way they suggested we advertise. They approved all the advertisements we put out. The advertisement sum is about three pages long, a lot of good information in there, and we advertised it to various, you know, deployment agencies that they recommended, so we followed all that. With the, with some of the additions that had to take place for this OEM, including some asbestos removal, and a handicap lift to go from the sixth floor to the seventh floor, which is going to be a subfloor, we had to add that. So they allowed us to take the hundred fifty thousand dollars that we weren't going to get anyway, and move it into the OEM. So you got some really hundred fifty thousand for this year going through, through the, through the resumes. Rich and Scott have a long history of emergency management. Scott has taken numerous courses, I had the opportunity as fire chief to work with Scott. He's voted qualified, and having Richard the first time go through his resume, and the interest he has in these one qualified. This is a way to, we go back to Gosa, so what we'd like to do, this is not really a full-time position, we will not have the money going forward for it. We'd like to assign it to an existing commissioner and give him an LDRM, a local disaster recovery manager to work with during those events. And quite frankly, during all those events, a lot of this work gets done in the D W office by, by our staff, so, in terms of recovery costs. I hope that answers the question.
No, no. I have a question, for the, for the Gosa-
I'm sorry, say it again?
If you change, if we change, and Gosa changed the contract, where is that?
Gosa, we have that contract, and we actually advertised, and we made a change. If you want to foil it, we'll get you a copy of it.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the public about the OEM desk? Come on, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address for the record.
Frank Quay, 573 Magnolia Boulevard. There's this provision vesting legal authority, exhibition to anyone assigned to the office, allowing them to compel to a legal authority participants to perform, presuming that they're not police officers.
This item is just related to the retention of an engineering firm, that's it?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the engineering firm for the OEM, yes? Please state your name and address for the record.
How are you getting this thing built down? Um, I just want to reply to everything about this OEM. Aren't all organizations somewhere in this building already? Like, the police department's like right there, fire department's right there, sanitation's right there, like, why are we making like another one? And then on top of it, doesn't it have some company already have one that we can just like attach into? Like, it's a group chat, like, it sounds like a lot for nothing. Sorry.
No, you're hopefully understating the importance of this. You're understanding, as I said earlier, we set up my office in the police department as the OEM that houses city manager, public works, the police department, fire department, city council came in to get briefed on that. I also had to meet with the governor and the United States Senator from our state during these processes. It was no privacy. So, when something bad happens, we need to have a dedicated place, we need to have clear minds, prepare for and organize for recovery. And this is... Brockel Center has an OEM, we are going to have an OEM, Nassau County has an OEM, and I don't know all of the OEMs, but there are way more than that. We actually have partnership with Brockel Center at one point.
I'm just saying, it seems like everything was bendered around this building, and on this block, and made some, like, pretty much like a microcosm of that whole block on this floor, just being a little redundant. That's how it came to Brockel Center, I don't... I'll need to email for it.
Commissioner, if you just addressed, I thought the question was Nassau County has an OEM. Why is it beneficial for us to have our own? Why? Question was, I just answered part of your question, Nassau County has its own OEM. Why are we not using their OEM as opposed to building our own? Do you have any answer?
Because there are decisions that have been made locally. A perfect example of being our own OEM, as Sandy progressed, we ended up moving into the public works, because we were able to get a generator in the power of the building. When we moved into public works, that gave us enough space to actually work. But, at one point, we had to get everyone out of space and just bring in PSE and G, so we could re-energize the overhead lines to get power. We were without power for almost three weeks. We would have been out without power if they had taken the supplement approach, which means a licensed engineer goes into every home, and that's what Nassau County wants to do, send a licensed electrical engineer to every home to determine whether or not it's safe to put on the electric. We worked with PSE and G to do it safely and do it in blocks at a time, but because we had the ability to have that space for, when the storm was ongoing in very early stages, we actually sent people up to be at the Nassau County OEM, and we competed for resources without the presence of South Shore. We won't be competing with resources, we're going directly to the state with our own OEM. There is a lot of work that has been done in this.
Oh, I'm sure there is. I'm not gonna...
Thank you. I'm sure like myself, it's all newness.
Just one additional question. The grant covers the physical structure of the... All right, all right. The grant covers the physical structure, infrastructure administration. The equipment of the OEM, would that be done under a separate grant, or is that somehow included? Because obviously, equipment is not going to be cheap.
Yes, whether or not the equipment is going to be included, the equipment, right down to the laptops, to the chairs, to the tables, to cabinets, are all part of the project.
Of this one?
Yes, not this... Okay. This is the design stage, so, we're going far afield into the actual OEM, but it will be, the design stage does have all of the type of equipment, so that it will fit the spaces provided.
Any other comments about the design of the new OEM? Yes? Please state your name and address for the record.
Moreno, Long Beach Park, just a quick question. They have comprehensive plans and city council moved to stop and shut, right? So, are we going to spend money on the OEM here and then move it there, or has this been like thought about?
For the last thirty years, I've told the soup box we've developed. We can't wait to see if that's ever gonna happen.
Okay, I'm just, because there's a meeting where I can speak about it, so, just, has to be thought about, put into consideration to whoever is going to build this office?
I haven't given any consideration. In my mind, the most expedient thing to do is to build our own, and if that ever does come to fruition, we'll deal with it at the time. All the equipment will be movable, the space will have to be rebuilt, so the entire city hall will have to be rebuilt, so at the time we do those things, we can't make much space. We're not going to lose the equipment.
Or we'll lose money if I build a something here?
We will certainly be stable.
The state, by case, we tax, as everybody here does, so we're going to lose money anyway. So, if any thought being put into it that we can use space that we already have somewhere, whether it be like the lot, or some floor here that's not utilized, just so that we don't waste money, because we don't have an awful lot of money to spend in Long Beach.
No, we certainly don't.
So, I think it should be something that should be thought about, instead of maybe wasting the state's money on a building, that we bring it down that we don't have the money to spend on a new office. So, we use something in the interim and just make do.
Well, as I said earlier, this process has been going on for years.
I understand that, but like, what we're going through right now is we have no money. So, it's up to you, and I'm sorry, you're our intern, city manager, so it's up to you to bring, to bring my voice and tell them, we don't have the money. As the Long Beach taxpayer, as the New York state taxpayer, we don't have the money, so use what we have and stop wasting money and just...
Okay, I have to take exception with your characterization of wasting money. I believe this is a viable project. When we brought in the... I have to finish this one. When we brought in the end years to look at building an OEM, we looked at the Asher Arena, we looked at the community center at the West End, we looked at City Hall, we looked at the Osiria Police Building, we looked at every space we had, including space in City Hall, and this was the most viable solution. And I gathered in what ifs, so, we have the money, we put it for the grant, we approved for the grant, it's fully funded, and we're going to move forward.
Well, we all understand it's fully funded, and then it's never fully funded.
Wait, I can interrupt. If we don't, if, because we don't use this money, it's my understanding that the money is lost, and I don't want to speak for everybody else, but if we're preparing for a storm or we're preparing for some other type of disaster, to the extent that we can keep these things in one place, and basically, look, I'm not a disaster expert, but the experts are telling us that this is the most appropriate thing for us to do. If in fact, we build another city hall that is beautiful, I'm fairly certain that we would be able to accommodate this type of office in that place. We've gone through all of the process of looking and analyzing different locations, and this seems to be the most appropriate. I'm not the expert, but the engineers and the experts have said to us, this is the most appropriate location. So, while we plan for the future, whether it be with a comprehensive plan or something else, I personally don't want to be part of a place where we can't, we don't have, we have the opportunity to build this office, and it's fully funded, and we have the money, why would we hold off while we attempt to modify the, by the city, city hall? We can agree to disagree on it, but if we have the opportunity, but it's fully funded by some taxpayer... No, I'm sorry. It's fully funded by some taxpayer. I'm sorry, I'm not even... I'm sorry, I love finishing my point. So, if you have the opportunity to finish yours, just give me an opportunity to finish mine. If we believe that we want to be as prepared as possible for an urgency, and this is the way to do it, then I don't want to wait to do it any longer. We have the funding here, maybe there'll be funding opportunities in the future. I understand that money is tight everywhere, the state is saying, we see it in the newspaper every single day, villages, counties, towns, all over the state are saying that there's financing and other financial constraints on municipalities. With that said, we have an opportunity to do this now, and the funding is there, we've been working on this project for years. I don't see why we would hold off on having and enhancing our emergency services. Okay, so, can we have a body comment?
There's a number of state grants that provide that money. Paid by, I recognize...
Taxpayer, okay. Taxpayers like me and everybody else sitting here, so if we don't need to waste taxpayers' money from any other towns or villages, then why should we? And just like tell them, listen, let's just hold off, we can like make do with like space, the same way as you do in your own home or your own business. You make do with what you have, with what you can afford. I would hardly suggest that building an office and a campus or emergency response would be something that should wait until future grants that are a possibility, that are not even in the specific planning stages. So, we can agree to disagree, but to the extent that we can do anything to enhance our preparedness for emergencies, I fully support it. Okay, everybody?
This is about the engineering of the OEM, right? Can you start, just station your name and address for the record.
Detective Brandon Hayley, the magistrate street over in Long Beach, I'm trying to speak to Mike. First of all, I would applaud the city for looking to building an OEM, building an EOC. This is coming from somebody that was in Nassau County, during hurricane Sandy, coordinating a private sector response to the city of Long Beach. I can tell you that I'm surprised that the city does not have a current function of OEM today, and the requirements that need to be in place to build an OEM more than this county. You have to have environmental control, the engineering report states, need to have proper staffing, and it's very important to have that interoperability in cities in Long Beach. So, just want to say I do applaud the fact that the city is a bargaining center, and it is going to be pretty important for all department heads. One regard is the staffing, if I can be questioned, but in terms of having all those resources in one room, can save lives and extract our resources very quickly. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, next item.
I require the resolution authorized to the city manager and city controllers to transfer funds within the 2017, 2018 budget.
Okay, this is a standard budgetary process that's used by all, if not all, most years to come. And what happens is the year winds down, you all lose to the family budget, you have the food budget, you have the rent budget, you have the car budget. Well, you got a great deal on the cars, you have a little extra money in your car budget, but you don't have enough food. So, at the end of the year, you transfer the car budget left over to the food, and you have a nice feeling. Pretty much that's what we do in city government. We have a line on the budget which has about, I can't remember how many, and at the end of the year, as we close the end of the year, we see where we have pennies here or there left over, pennies here or there where we had to overspend because a couple months ago we had to buy new chemicals for the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the, our dirt pump, portable water plant, and those chemicals went up, so that was an additional expense. Where does that money come from? It comes out of the general fund where we rebalance things. If we were to go with what normally is done throughout the majority of the year, where any over fifteen hundred dollars to show the extra transfers is given to the city council or to the public to see, then that's the way we operate. What I will commit to do is, we will make a document of every one of these transfers that will be available after July 1st, and the council, the council authority has to this, so they're provided with this information, and they'll have the tool of the site, and however they want to share with the public, that's fine. This is simply a county principle to read your stuff books, to end the fiscal year responsibly.
Okay, I did ask for a comprehensive list of all the items of where the money was moved around, so I appreciate you mentioning that right now. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing no, seeing none, next item.
I'm six, it's a resolution delegating to the city controller of the city of Long Beach, Nassau County, we are, the powers of the local authorities are delivering all the tax anticipation dollars of said city, or so much in order as may be necessary in anticipation of the correction of taxes, whether it's a facility convention July 1st, 2018, and to prescribe the term school and contents and provide for the sale and credit enhancement of search notes.
Okay, a lot of our general fund has been committed to Sandy, and it is reimbursable, but unfortunately, with Harvey and Marie, I believe, the FEMA is inundated with claims, and the older claims take a little bit longer process, which we're not in the same emergency state that we once were. So, this is a way to continue our operations while we're awaiting reimbursement of all the funds.
I'd just like to call the commissioner of DPW, okay? Just a second. So, this four million dollars is an anticipation of money we're expecting to get?
Yes, this is money have owed to us for projects that we closed out, FEMA projects.
So, these are closed down...
They're closed down. We expended all the paperwork that we're supposed to, just a matter of waiting out to FEMA to release the checks and the state to be stationed. Ninety percent of it will come from FEMA and seventy percent from the state, and actually totaled out to about four point eight million.
Okay, so there's nothing else for us to do except wait?
There's nothing else for us to do except wait. We have other projects that we're working on, which you know will also be closing out, but that's down the road.
Okay, thank you.
What is the anticipated wait for this, for all of the paperwork?
Typically, typically in the beginning when we were closing projects out, my understanding was we would get reimbursed in about two to three months. This is the take a little longer, so it could be six to seven months.
So, are we already, just give us a sense of the calendar, that we submitted the paperwork six months ago?
Well, it's multiple projects, and they've been submitted over a two-month period, so, we have to wait till the project is completely done, we close out all the invoices with the contractors, once that's done, and then we have to go, you know, to make sure that everything is acceptable and we send them in for approval, even if they've all been approved. So, it's just a matter of wait to kind of check that. That's really the only thing that needs to be done.
A quick question, Commissioner, do we have any reason to believe that we won't be reimbursed with these funds?
Absolutely none. Any other questions?
Is one hundred percent of this going towards, or reimbursable through FEMA? Is any of it going to non-FEMA, is it going to salaries, is it going to city operations?
Well, some of this reimburses salaries that were expended on this project over time. Each one of these work projects that we set up, we're allowed to, we're not trying to keep my work on it. So, a lot of this would be in our office, Bill Martone, and Joe Burizio, so the secretary will help. All that money will get reimbursed. Some of the projects that we did in-house with our CSDA staff, their salaries will get reimbursed, their, uh, actually get reimbursed to the city. So, it's all part of what we spent with contractors, engineers, and any in-house later, or, you know, technical work.
Yeah, President Robinson, is there someone that can speak to the debt service or payments in terms of the rollout of this four million dollar?
I don't think...
We have the deputy comptroller.
We don't have the information tonight about the rollout. It will take, will we anticipating two years, four years, ten years for this rollout? Just like, it's like sixty months, sixty years. Can't carry that.
We're anticipating six to eight months, is what I hear.
We were in a similar position last year with a different, yeah, I understand the point of view, it's a forty-four million dollar project. So, we've been getting reimbursed. Last year, we did this simply in June, and we were reimbursed in October, which is about four or five months later, and we do anticipate the same kind of thing. which is about four or five months later, and we do anticipate the same type of thing.
So that's my answer to the question. So in other words, six months, six to eight months from now, are we going to pay back the entire amount? Are we paying that four percent of the amount? How are we going to roll the money back into the budget?
Well, the one we did last year, which was a RAN, which is a revenue anticipation note, which is different from this, which is a tax anticipation note. The revenue anticipation note came with conditions that we borrowed it from June and you couldn't pay it back in advance. So we have the money for that. We can't use it for anything else, but come June, we will take last year's October payment from FEMA and the state and apply to that entire debt service, which will happen very similarly. And there are little sub-differences between, and a RAN, but I've also been on the CCL, so I'm learning.
So at this point, we don't know what the interest rate would be on this for the debt service?
No.
Also, the resolution that allows, allows renewal of the notes and new finance law allows them to be renewed, I believe, up to five years. So in reality, this could be searched out to five years, correct? Okay, I just heard the new finance law, it's a little wild, it said you can renew it up to five years.
No, the RANs are a three-year and it came in to believe in five. We'll check again to get the information, but I know the RANs definitely in five years.
Right, but this isn't a RAN, this is a tax anticipation note, which is five.
What are our intentions?
My intention is to pay by way.
Okay, in light of the fact that I don't have information with respect to the interest in debt service, I move the table and I over to the next meeting.
One second.
Motion to, uh, move the table item number six.
Can't hear you. Can we close the microphones because you can't hear anything?
Before I go, I just have a question for council. What are the ramifications of potentially not doing this right now? And do we have a timeframe that we have to, uh, you know, pass the TAN?
My understanding is that we do have to pass the TAN within, early before the end of April.
Can't hear you.
My understanding is that we do have to adopt this TAN before the end of April, but that's not based on any unique insider knowledge like this corporation council.
Okay, so that gives us two weeks then to find out that information we need about debt service and, uh, and the potential for five years versus how quickly we should pay back. So call it up.
Okay. Motion to table item number six, Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
Move the table. I request a resolution authorizing publication appearing in orders authorizing financing for cause of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city stating the estimated total cost of their mortgage is $2,100,000, appropriate incentive amount therefore, and authorizing the issuance of non-duty $2,100,000 bonds to said city to finance said appropriation. This item is a publication only, the hearing will be held on April 17th at 7:00 P.M. On to the board. I request a resolution granting greater volume requirement to 268 West Park Avenue for the backup waiting convenience store. Would you just move the adoption aside?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Board, Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
I request a resolution authorizing settlement of an action board by the city of Long Beach against Iowa Kagan and Paulina Gage. Would you just move the adoption aside?
I will.
I will.
Board, Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
I vote yes, but I want to take an opportunity to thank the attorney and corporation council for pursuing this and for ensuring that we receive the best of the due to thank you. And I vote yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
I request a resolution authorizing the city manager to ensure agreement for insurance services for the Long Beach Range and Coolidge Project and to manage the budget. Would you just move the adoption aside and ask the man?
I will.
I will.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
I request a resolution authorizing the city manager to ensure agreement for construction administration and inspection services for establishment of an office of emergency management for the city of Long Beach and to manage the budget. Would you just move the adoption aside and ask the man?
I will.
Second? Board, Councilor Vandell.
I just want to address Ms. Egan, when she came up with her comment about do we really need, do we really need this? Uh, you know, I have some experience myself in this area and I can't overemphasize the importance a facility like this actually does make and it's a tax burden, so I vote yes.
Councilor Vandell.
I was here during Sandy and I saw how we hadn't mobilized and it would be irresponsible for us not to implement this, so I would just.
Councilor Moore.
Yeah, I just want to once again emphasize the importance of preparedness. This is what we are about, this is what makes our city move forward. However, I do also need to be hopeful about my disappointment with respect to information and sharing of information regarding the decisions that were made over the summer regarding Sandy. With that, I would ask.
I vote yes.
Yes.
President Obama.
Well, we do recognize it is in fact tax dollars. As Ms. Egan was alluding to, it's the state dollars. It is actually federal dollars, which are still in fact tax dollars. But OEM is constructed and designed by federal dollars. My vote is for you to face yes.
I require a resolution authorizing the city manager and city controller to transfer funds within the 2017-2018 budget. Would you just move the adoption aside?
I will.
I will.
Board, Councilor Vandell.
As the budget's beginning to shape up, I feel this, while it may be minor in routine, it advocates some responsibility from the council to track finances, so I vote no.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
I request a resolution authorizing publication appearing in orders authorizing financing for cause of separation payments to or for the benefit of employees of the city stating estimated total cost of their mortgage is $2,100,000, appropriate incentive amount therefore, authorizing the issuance of non-exceed $2,100,000 bonds of said city to finance said appropriation. Would you just move the adoption aside? Move the second.
I will.
Board, Councilor Vandell.
Again, as people are hearing the rumors, you know, obviously there's budget challenges this year and the council has yet to have one substantive discussion about dealing with those. And we're putting things on the agenda, a lot of money. We can't even figure out the situation we're in now. This just doesn't seem appropriate. I vote no.
If my understanding that this is on for publication purposes, so please, I would vote yes.
In light of all of the conversation that we've had today, I wanted to just ask a request that our president, along with our vice president, have a meeting with all of the council to discuss the ongoing issues with respect to our debt service, with respect to our fiscal reports, and I will also vote no.
I, Councilor Vandell mentioned this is an item to, for publication for a hearing and it relates to separation pay for individuals who have already left. The implication for not voting for this would be somewhat catastrophic, so I vote yes.
This is for publication for a hearing, so the hearing will be next week. So instead of grandstanding, at this moment, I vote yes.
Someone who orders, not grandstanding, this is about asking for information. All of us have the same information and until that happens, we can't make decisions.
That's what the hearing is for.
No, that's what your responsibility is to make sure that we all have the same information. When that happens, we call meetings.
That's what the hearing is for, publication of a hearing.
I just want to come to the hearing and learn about information like everyone else.
If there's information that we need, I have no trouble asking.
Please share some information and he counts as what we got.
There's specific information that you want, I'm happy to share what I have with you. I receive the answers to the questions that are.
I vote for what we need.
We have a scheduled meeting tomorrow.
City manager, what the personal report is, the file on the city court, the motion goes, man?
I will.
I will.
Board, Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Vandell.
Yes.
Councilor Moore.
Yes.
Vice President Diamond.
Yes.
President Obama.
Yes.
Okay, we enter our quid pro quo section. You receive three minutes of uninterrupted time. Ms. Trusten.
Mr. Obama, could you please close the round first and I'll get up there.
I'm sorry, oh, sure, sure. Make your way up here. Ms. Judy Viney. Take your time, Ms. Trusten, when you get up here, I'll, I'll call you.
Thank you.
Judy Viney, question for our members. My question, I'm here a couple of weeks ago before that, perhaps, or I asked for that, perhaps, sort of proactively, in a friendly way, so that we can ban hookah lounges in little cities. I just wonder what happens after we, I don't care, and I know your policy is not to respond, but where does it go after that? You know, I mean, does it just sit here? Who answers who, who brings it up? What goes on?
What goes on when something is, I mean, sometimes, sometimes it is discussed by the council, sometimes it's not. Sometimes someone from the staff will write a memo saying that this is not possible.
Okay, I get that. So how long does that process take?
I mean, it generally depends, I guess, if someone drives it or not.
Okay, so if I go with less, two weeks ago, asking it again, can we take a look at?
So we can take a look at any kind of business we do or don't want to see in the city of Long Beach and that would be done as part of a comprehensive plan and creating a planning board.
Okay, so the answer is if somebody comes to report that they're on a court for a variance or a hookah lounge, and it's present in the giving variance, it's lost in parking, we then open that door.
But wasn't, if you're talking about that, you said it wasn't a hookah lounge.
No, I know that was.
I will.
I'm well aware of that. What I'm saying is should something happen between now and the comprehensive plan, the door opens for that and we're back. And you certainly already brought up the twenty-one over. This is another thing that could protect our children proactively before playing mala than having to police it. And so I'm asking the council to consider, I don't know, direct, do you live in a corporation? I don't know what the product is, but to consider looking at that so that we don't have to face it in the future. That's, you know, one thing. The other thing I need to ask you is, we talked last time also about notifications that the SLA requires that a vendor who wants to apply for license must notify the city or close community or the city thirty days before they apply for license. But there's no opportunity for public either support or, um, problem with it because we don't know, we don't know. There's no notification of it, if there's no, um, information given actually to the public. By the time the license is applied for, it's a done deal.
Can I just have an opportunity?
Same as us.
Can I, I just, I just, I just want to respond to your, your first point with regard to this, the, the store, tobacco store. I don't think that anybody who supported it really would like to see a big store across the street or, I mean, that's not my thing, I don't do any of those things, but I, I think that that actually demonstrates the need for not only a comprehensive plan, but a change in the zoning so that we have an opportunity. Look, that's a permissive use. We couldn't say whether we have a planning board or no planning board. We can't just, if that's a proper use by planning. No, no, what I'm saying to you is that I agree with you. I think that we do, but I think that a PCL approach to changing and preventing those type of things might not really get us to where we want to be.
For the most part, I would agree with you. But since we now know that the governor has convened a committee to discuss and study recreational marijuana, we know where this is going. So we know what other means, this is how we have done across the state. And that is take advantage of getting ahead.
That may be accurate, Miss Viney, but the issue here is all she's working. And that's not, that's not, but I understand that, you know.
No, I am not talking about that, that's, that's just at all.
Okay, you said, you said you are talking about that, I understand that that's not the problem for you.
I understand, I'm not talking about that.
Just clarify.
I'm well aware that that would be, what I'm saying is enacting legislation or however you do it, that would prohibit hookah lounges would also prohibit those already existing valet lounges from turning into that, another way of protecting our children.
And I, I just wanted to also respond to your second part with regard to the notification. To the extent that it would need code amendment for us to amend our code to require that we publish it on the website before, within those thirty days to give the public an opportunity to pursue and advocate it with the state, I recall on the, that was the council, unless there's a.
Well, my, my understanding is we're not notified either.
I'm sorry.
We're not notified either.
The city has to know, the city's purpose, I'm sure. Oh, yes.
Yeah, whatever, whatever establishment, either the news or applies for a new SLA license, they have to send the city a thirty-day notice before they make that application.
Right, so we, to the extent that we need to amend our code, I, I'm presumably, unless it's something that, but I would ask that the, the city take the appropriate steps to ensure that that information is published within, say, five or six days from us receiving it, to give appropriate amount of time for you to, for you to see.
For anyone to, really.
Whomever it is, whatever. But obviously you can't, you have to give a little bit of time to the city to post it. But we did a couple of days ago. What, you think it's on the website or?
So, so when we close the protocol note by the city manager and we'll have, when an application for a new SLA license comes, we'll figure out how, where, what the city manager do.
That would be great.
And I would just ask that the city manager that we post on the website, that's our, our new policy. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Ms. Liz Trusten. Please just station eight again to record.
Liz Trusten, Long Beach. Over the last four years, I've been talking to numerous legislative bodies regarding about Gozer, rebuilding and resilience, and honestly, it's been exhausting. As you may or may not know, Gozer is slowly shrinking, both financially and morally, leaving homeowners, towns, and businesses literally up in the air. A number of recovery groups have done some internal forensic surveys, and we've found a number of issues that we are hoping to do and the council will address. One is that the league partners need to communicate with each other. Long Beach needs to communicate through courts, county tempsteads, in order to reveal contracts abroad and contracts without rights. Our faith in Gozer is wavering. So tonight, I'm, I'm kind of speechless that we're putting our faith in a system that is failing the residents of the South Shore. That your guarantee is money and we're not, it's just. That your guarantee is money and we're not, it's just, I just, I admire your faith. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tressen. Mr. Deere.
Dr. Dean.
Oh, Dean, I'm sorry. Please state your name and address from the record.
John Dean, one oh six Arizona Avenue, in the city of Bethany, Long Beach. After forty-nine years, you've taken away parking on West Park from the other family's area. Now I can't park on Fox Street because you say cars that were five feet can park there. I don't know if you're aware of this, parking space is deemed rather restricted in the west end because of the new style of construction hours. Now, when you're doing this, you take the families and say, you can't park near our house. Besides that, it's just an issue. The restriction actually doesn't do anything. I went through the traffic, they told me that I wasn't to help people see. Most people when they're sitting in their cars, on their best, four and a half feet. So five feet doesn't provide any visibility, a car that's five feet, doesn't add the visibility when you sit at four and a half feet. And this goes whether you're in a parking, in a driveway, or moving south on Arizona, where I live, or Delaware, or whatever. You can't see until you inch out into the park, it's either five foot cars, six foot car, and by the way, you know, might be sixty feet off the edge of the corner, but at seventy feet, you got a construction van, that, that doesn't accomplish anything. The real problem on Fox Street is not the parking, it's the full traffic. It's the only residential area in Long Beach that does not have some type of traffic control east and west very well. If you go to any street anywhere, you can see a stop sign where it's traffic, whatever. That's the only area that, you do not have any stop sign in the capital, in the north. Now, I've lived there for nine, ten years, and fighting this last couple of years. I can't, sometimes it takes me six minutes, get in a point car, wait for the west traffic to stop, and get out, not have to wait for the east traffic to go through. You try to maneuver around to get out of the west end. It's absurd. And if you're walking, you get the westbound traffic coming because the light at New York is green. That turns red, and then you got all cars to finish. By the time that happens, the eastbound on Delaware is green, and then I can let you pass either. So the only way you can pass is actually to walk out and force the people to stop. And if you're on Arizona or, or Pennsylvania, anything, there's no road on any of the streets. You're sitting there, you're trying to make a right or a left, the speed of the traffic is just so absurd, there's no enforcement of anything. And that silly stoplight is that, I mean, if I'm blinking, like, the people don't even stop for that. They go right around it, there's no enforcement. And you're like, I just, I just feel stressed.
The vehicles, let's say, over five feet over on the corners, is that right? That would be your?
Yes, it is a visibility issue, and not to quibble, but the average height of a vehicle that's under five foot, which is the top of the roof, you still get any visibility through the hood of the car to the street, to the street.
But it's only on the corners, is that correct?
Yes, only on the corners to increase visibility in these sections, which is recommended by the National High Street Administration, the National, you've talked about the whole places, and the strong provocation, I suggest against it, I'll use the softer language personally.
Just to respond to, I have been challenging to go on the north side of Park, on Arizona, and come down in the middle of the traffic, in the brush hour, in the afternoon and morning, and I can't even see if any cars fall in that sixty foot area, east or west. You're not going to see anything until you inch out into the room. And that goes for both sides, any street, doesn't matter.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Brendan Hayley. Please state your name, from the record.
Sure, Brendan Hayley, New Hampshire Street, Long Beach District. I represent over one hundred property owners and residents in the west end. We are calling for improvement of quality of life in the west end of Long Beach, specifically related to the operation of Minnesota's foreign wealth. We are asking the Minnesotans and the new operators who filed a thirty day notification to the city on February twenty-second, asking them to be good neighbors, to work with us in the community, and to be active participants in creating a good lifestyle in the west end. We have petitioned for the city.
Okay. Have you, have you met with the owners of Minnesota?
So we have not. Judy Viney just pointed out before, we actually foiled the city's request to obtain information on the liquor license. We're not calling for a ban on the bar, but what we are calling for is a resolution to some of the concerns we've been experiencing over the past twenty years. In fact, some of the residents living in the west end have experienced issues going on in twenty, thirty years, not just with Minnesota, but other establishments. Specifically with Minnesota's, the current structure is not conducive to a lot more nightclub that operates at four AM with vibrations that extend far beyond the four walls of the premises. I was surprised to learn that the building department provided a use application, or clearly a use application, on March second to improve them as a bar cabaret, given that they received a hundred and two complaints around the structure itself. Again, we're not, by no means, we're calling for closure of Minnesota. What we are calling for is that the city can respond to the state records already requesting stipulations around the method of operation and how they operate in the west end. The west end is a vibrant community, you know that. There's a fine line between the enjoyment that we have in the west end and living standards. Unfortunately, the previous owners of Minnesota's, the ones that operated the Chicago Bar in 2016, had crossed that line many, many times. We've tried to work with those owners on three separate occasions, they have dismissed it to us and to other residents that have not needed our concern. We have worked with Police Commissioner Tagen, as well as previous city manager Jeremy, who have been responsive, and they have stepped up enforcement in the neighborhood. The only issue with that is the police department is the last line of defense, and it's unfair and burden our police officers and law enforcement with quality of life concerns. And that really started with permitting and building, you know, occupancy issues, and asking the Minnesotans and the operators to be citizens and citizens. So that's all we're calling for, that's all we're asking for. We hope that the city can respond to the state records already, in the fact that they will receive the notification that there will be a long-term sticker license to be submitted within thirty to sixty days. I want to leave you with one, one last quote, I can. These are, these are comments from residents who did disturb it. For twenty years, Minnesota's been getting away with disturbing everyone too close to their homes. Last year was out of control. At one point, a couple of companies recruited Minnesota's at nine thirty PM, and engaged in sexual acts in front of families and shelter. We love the Long Beach community, we live across from the inn, and don't experience any of the problems that bars, as we do with Minnesota's. They need to do extensive soundproofing to the buildings, so we, the neighbors, do not have to dance along to the sound of music every night. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Eunice Heshen.
Hi, Eunice Heshen. I thought we were going to talk about the budget tonight, but we're not, so I just have a couple of general questions. The first one is how are we doing with the city manager's search, any closer?
We're doing good. We, council has a meeting tomorrow night, as I said before, and that's one of the items we're scheduled to discuss.
They hope to have somebody in place. Do you have any idea when?
Soon.
Soon, thank you. Also, I know we're having the gay pride weekends again, and as much as I enjoyed it last year, I didn't think it was a big success for them, so I was only with the pride that they're coming three days again. Did they pay us what they were supposed to pay us?
They gave us their entire grant, but I do think it ended up costing us more than we had anticipated, which we do not have the money for this year. That's the next follow-up.
Oh, so are they not coming back then?
They are coming back, but it's, I believe it's going to be a little smaller scale.
Okay, and also, I was thinking, if they give us money, maybe other events should, you know, I don't want to step on any toes, but some of the big events that we have, like Irish Day or even volleyball tournaments, where we have to have extra police on, we're paying so much money for that. Even the flowers that go on Washington Boulevard, which are gorgeous and that's my neighborhood, let the hibernians pay for it, they make a lot of money on that day, and give us some money for the cost.
I think we're looking for a model where the user pays for the cost associated.
And I think you had, you know, it was a little scary, but John sort of mentioned that it was not as much discussion about the budget, was, that's scary.
Budget doesn't represent the question.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we have had budget meetings, and we, we have just responded to your question. We have had budget meetings. A number of us were there, and those that were able to be there were given an opportunity to follow by telephone. So we have had some discussion regarding it, it's not deserved.
Good, I feel like the budget should almost be the most important thing they talk about in the community.
I think that we all agree.
I mean, we are, it sounds like from rumors that we're in a lot of trouble, and I think you need to have a citizen group as part of the budget hearings, or throughout the year, for different ideas, because we have a lot of talent to keep them in that living. And also, since you interrupted me, or I interrupted you, it was sort of an embarrassing display between the two of you before. I think I have to agree with Anita on this, that if there is city council meeting or discussions going on, the whole city council should be there unless they choose not to attend. But if anything, I mean, you said to her, ask me and I'll tell you. Well, you can't ask somebody, you don't have that going on.
I, I said, what I did say was, was that everything that I have asked for, if there's information that I need before I go on an item and I ask for it, I received it.
I understand that, but sometimes you don't know when that's.
That if I have, if there's information that I need, then.
For example?
There's something that I, I ask questions on all.
Yes, I understand that, but if you don't know that something is going on, you can't ask. I'm going to give you a personal example, many years ago.
I am the, I am the, I am the agenda, or I am the, I am the council member that was standing at that time. I actually probably received them after everybody else was. So we all have an opportunity, and I think that you can ask for information.
If some people in the council are needing separately, that should not be done.
I don't, so.
Okay. Between the two of us, we've been interrupting each other, and you kind of raised your voice at Nora earlier, but you were the one who interrupted her. I just thought you should relook at the tape and see that, okay?
Ms. Heshen, here's one point I'd like to make. When I took over as Deputy City Manager, I instructed the staff that any request from the council be responded to, to the entire council. So even if this time, I'm, would pay us a question, the response goes to all five, so the, I do try to keep everything.
Yeah, you know, what I'm saying is this, many years ago, my father-in-law had a heart attack. I didn't know about it. How can I ask? Should I call somebody up and say, did he have a heart attack? No, I had no idea he had a heart attack until somebody told me. If nobody told me, I wouldn't know. Do you see what I'm saying? If there was something going on that you didn't know enough to ask for that, you can't ask. How can you ask about something you don't know?
What, what?
I didn't know my time.
You alluded to the fact that there are meetings that are taking place without certain council members.
I couldn't, you said that.
I absolutely did not say that, that is not what I said.
You had meant.
Yep. No, I did not say that. No, I did not say that there were meetings. I said, any information that I have asked for, I receive the answers to what I asked for. That's all that I said. I did not say that there were meetings that have taken place without certain council members.
Point of information, Commissioner Tackey has been wonderful in terms of making sure that all of us receive information. This is the first time, because I'm going into my third year, and this is the first time that I ask for information, or before I can ask for information, he's provided that information. But that's not the issue. He made, he made a stipulation that all of us, if it was something that we were asking, that we would see see all the members of the council regarding that, so that all of these answers can be, we can have the information. But that's not always the case. And that's why this information that's being shared today, that people know about, that some people don't know about. So we have to work on that. It's not for us to have a conversation here, and that's why I made the statement this evening that I'm asking for, for our vice president, as well as our president, to call a meeting where we can have that conversation, all five of us present, so that we can have that conversation, so that we do not have to do it here.
Sometimes, sometimes, discreetly, sometimes when I come here and questions are brought up, it sounds like things were not discussed ahead of time, and it seems to me that the city council should be talking about these issues before the meeting. Thank you.
Miranda J? Is that right?
Yes.
I'm pleased, just state your name and address from the record.
Miranda J, Long Beach, New York. My question to everyone here is, what are we doing about the disrepair of our roads? We've got tremendous tonne loads, cars getting destroyed, and no one picks their own road. And this is month after week, after month, after year, after year, and nothing is ever fixed yet. We're taxed to death, and you guys seem to send money on the things that you feel are important. So how do we know that?
So we do have a, a pretty aggressive road program, I think our DDW commissioner would agree. The winter is just pretty much wrapping up, although it did snow yesterday. And we do, starting last year, we do see some of our CSA orders here as well. We started repairing the puddles in a different way, so that they don't come back, but, you know, with the expansion and contraction, that is, that is the issue. But they do get fixed fairly quickly if you, have you used the app at all? Because that's really the best way for puddles specifically.
I've tested it.
Okay.
I drive from Long Beach to Hollywood, and I suggest we go get in cars and drive.
We'll drive and, and understand.
We get, that the ones that are not fixed, and they get worse, and they get different parts, and they're just like.
And we do, you want to speak to the, this is, it is one thing we do spend money on. One, I'm sorry?
This has been particularly rough winter because of the, the decrease, and you get a lot of glory cycles, so we do have a lot of excess puddles, but we have a puddle crew out there every single day from street department to puddles. Also, the last city council meeting requested to put on, on the website, the roadwork that we've done over the years. And when you look at it, you know, it's, it's a million and a half dollars a mile of road, okay? And we have fifty-two miles of road, but when you look at the progress we've made over the last five years on that, you'll see a color-coded map on the website, on the public works, you'll see the amount of roadwork we've done, a bound of roadwork, we've got national grid to do to repair their streets on the west end. It's really, in terms of most communities, we probably have more roadwork going on than anybody. Puddles are an issue during the colder weather, we can only repair them temporarily, so we can get hot asphalt in there. Once we make the final repairs, they, they will disappear. And we do about four hundred thousand dollars a year in overlays, where we take the worst roads and try to overlay just the road now to the young construction. So if you look on that site, you see there's a awful lot of work that goes into our roads, and our CSA members really do, do a tremendous job to it.
When, when do we start the high school?
I would imagine by the end of April, plans will be in full operation.
Someone have a call down to, to Mr. Bill?
Yeah.
Are you sure?
Sure, we, we drive, our supervisor drive, well, we're, we're going to be sure, I'll have the street department address it tomorrow.
You got the location?
Ms. Vinnie Leece. Please just state your name and address from the record.
Vinnie Leece, four eighteen East Hudson Street. I just had a quick question on Mr. Pendel asking, that was our deputy's controller?
Yeah.
Um, how's the search going for the new controller? Go right now.
That's, that's.
Because it was just like, again, my wife has two injuries, we're going over and stuff, but it was kind of crazy when you have councils asking questions about how long percentages can be and how long bonds can be extended and the person that's currently sitting in like that seat doesn't have those answers, doesn't have an alarm.
No, because the rate is established at time of alarm. You're never going to know the rate after.
No, no, I understand with the rate and stuff, but being able to borrow money that they don't understand that you can extend bonds and roads and certain things by certain years, you know, that is alarming and we don't have to, so hopefully we'll find it.
Ms. Havel Akata. Hi, please just state your name and address.
Sure, my name is Havel Akata, Brooklyn Street Mayor. So, I'm sorry, I spent the last 20 years commuting on Long Island Railroad, but my family goes back to the 30s in Long Beach. My daughter is third generation Long Beach high school graduate. She graduated in '61, I was in '04, and the life in it cannot remember what she might have graduated, what she graduated. I see a lot of conflict going on and as a businesswoman, I take pause for that, but as a resident, it frightens me. I did not expect coming here tonight and to see the arguments that's been going on. I think we're all here and we all want my stuff. We might have a different opinion on how to get there, but this scares me. Putting that to the side, the reason why I did come up here is because I spent the last 20 years commuting, I did not have the opportunity to come to these meetings. And I think a large community of our people get on the trains every single day and nowadays, six o'clock is the new five o'clock. And you will not see many people on those five o'clock trains. It starts getting really busy down in Penn as five fifty-five. Five fifty-five, six thirteen. I would love to see more people at these meetings that commute every day. I work from home now and done with the commuting, so I'm able to come here. We have a lot of people that live here that don't have that opportunity and I would really like for all of you to consider moving some of your meetings to seven thirty. Thirty minutes could really make a difference. I think that we have smart people that are interested in what's going on here, but they're not home in time. So that was not more of a question, it's a request. We need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on Long Beach. Mr. Jacobson. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, hi, we need to break us up. Not going to be one of the characters that, uh, I just wanted to talk about the upcoming zoning board meeting. Oh, sorry, I don't like to sit back and criticize everybody else. The upcoming zoning board meeting that we were forced to reschedule the result accordingly. Now, I understand you guys are kind of boxed into a corner for I S R's IDA application, but for whatever reason, this judge now punted this matter back to the zoning board. I personally think he had sufficient grounds to revoke their variances, but now that it's back in the hands of the zoning board, it's an unprecedented opportunity for us to correct a, what is in my opinion, a great wrong. I S R completely misrepresented their ability to go forward with this project in obtaining their variance. They claimed they were shell-ready, they claimed they had their finances in order. Obviously, none of that turned out to be true. I, as the city, would have gone accident to revoke the variances on those misrepresentations along, but for whatever reason, the city didn't do it. Now, we subsequently, in spite of those misrepresentations by I S R, renewed their permits, not once, I believe, twice. This is an opportunity for life to slate clean and get rid of I S R, once and for all, they're clearly not interested in the well-being of the community, they're clearly interested only in their own bottom line. I think that the council needs to come out and oppose I S R, this zoning board effectively re-granching I S R these variances. I think that we need to shut this I S R thing down, get this, the zoning board needs to stand up and do the right thing for residents of our city and not their political laws and deny these guys renewal or whatever, however the terminology may be, revoke their variances, revoke their variances and let's get somebody else in there and give this a fresh start.
So just, just a point with that, the city council is advised to not get involved in any sort of zoning, whether it's for or against the project, so that in Article 78, it is not filed or the city council or the city administration is not sued. So it's very rare, if not otherwise, to see a council member at a zoning board meeting because it is a separate body. Mr. Marcus Tinker.
I'll pass.
Ms. Liatosa.
Hi, I'm very excited that we're going forward with the OEM. We totally need that, that's great. And the next thing would be the comprehensive plan, and we're talking about it, so I just want to say that there's a lot of people in the courts looking forward to having that hearing here. And I just want to say that I hope that you guys are going to have a lot of the experts that can actually speak to all of the issues and the things that people are talking about so that we can actually have a really positive hearing on that and then to vote. That's all I can say, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinker. Ms. Catherine Richards.
Hi, just state your name and address. Hi, Catherine Richards. Following up what Ms. Sosa was talking about, how do we get the comprehensive plan on the agenda? What can we do as a community to spearhead this and get moving along? Because I don't see it ever really coming up and I think it's something extraordinarily important to be discussed and addressed. So instead of constantly asking what is going on the agenda, what can we do to expedite this and get along with that?
So I think, I think we'll see it after the budget and it would be the smartest thing right now where the administration is consumed with the budget and the council will be consumed with it shortly. So I think after that, we'll tackle the comprehensive.
So we should expect to see it on the agenda after the budget?
I would hope so, I would hope so. I, you know, I can't make any guesses about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyer Lester.
Please state your name and address.
Hi, Catherine Richards of Long Beach. Following up what Ms. Sosa was talking about, how do we get the comprehensive plan on the agenda? What can we do as a community to spearhead this and get moving along? Because I don't see it ever really coming up and I think it's something extraordinarily important to be discussed and addressed. So instead of constantly asking what is going on the agenda, what can we do to expedite this and get along with that?
So I think, I think we'll see it after the budget and it would be the smartest thing right now where the administration is consumed with the budget and the council will be consumed with it shortly. So I think after that, we'll tackle the comprehensive.
So we should expect to see it on the agenda after the budget?
I would hope so, I would hope so. I, you know, I can't make any guesses about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Boyer Lester.
Please state your name and address.
Mr. Seventy-two Boyd, first of all, Mr. Tackney, I think he's acting City Manager. It's your responsibility to teach the city council how to speak into the microphone. Nobody has a problem hearing you, nobody. Okay? So maybe you can take that. You do very well in that respect, as you always have. Basically, I'm trying to figure out this, you know, I'm looking at the agenda and I'm looking at the information that's given to the city council. And you've got to answer the vote on these things and I don't quite understand how you can vote on this with this little information. For example, asking for the city controller, the transfer funds, but you have no idea of the funds, you have no idea of the amount, you have no idea of how much is left over. You're asking to vote, well, there's going to be a hearing on the, the city, on the 21, $2.1 million, but you don't know who that's going to, you don't know, you know, and that's probably going to come up in the hearing. But then you're also being asked for the $4 million on tax anticipation notes, you don't know how long those notes can be good for, you don't know why the money wasn't paid before, you don't know what the money's for. You know, under what you're saying, the money only goes back into the taxes for the purpose of the taxes, but we were assured, of course, that this boardwalk was completely paid for. So we can't really go, there wasn't reason for the money to come out if we were sure it was paid for. But regardless of that, that's for another day because that was tabled. But do you guys get together and ask these questions? I mean, do you have any meetings? I mean, I know, Anita, you were talking about getting the city council together. It just doesn't seem that you guys are coming up here prepared unless you do have other meetings that, where you can discuss this. I understand you, you said that there were a bunch of meetings already this year. Do you guys get together on this or?
We have a caucus before each council meeting, yes.
And you discuss these things?
We discuss these things, yes.
Okay, now, my question is, how do you do that to be able to lead this law?
First of all, a caucus is perfectly permissible and as has been confirmed by a federal court decision, Almonte versus City of Long Beach, back when a caucus is used to take latest Charleston transportation. So not to discuss public policies, public meetings, things that are going to be discussed in front of the public. That's not correct.
And that's a court of appeals.
That's certainly not correct, Mr. Lester. And we have a case on point that we want to get litigated here, Almonte versus City of Long Beach. It's a federal case.
Uh-huh. And the Court of Appeals says that if it's going to be, if you're discussing, if you're getting together to discuss the public matters, that it has to be an open meeting.
That's not correct.
That's, that's exactly what they say. Now, you're deciding, Mr. Dusky, what the.
First of all, ladies and gentlemen, I just hear your comments, so. That's okay, but notwithstanding, I suggest you read the federal court decision that applies to.
And I suggest you read the Court of Appeals, which, which applies to the state of New York.
Your best court of appeals decision was cited in the federal court decision, Mr. Lester. Very well versed on this topic.
I am too. I've spent many years under the open meeting law. That's why I can't understand. And you do have these meetings, you admit you have the meetings, and I just don't understand how you can have these meetings, you can discuss these things. Now, obviously, you're discussing things because nobody wants to vote without knowing these things and I understand you do that, and yet the public doesn't get the opportunity to see the exact same things that you guys do. All right, my turn now. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Hey, Nora, yes, I just have three points. I know Mr. Albiola kind of addressed it. Can you just like let us know where we are with the city manager interviews, how many people we've had interviewed for the position and where we are on that? And then the second goes to the controller position? And then with regards to the comprehensive plan, you're saying it'll be after the budget, so is that after May or July or when will that be on for vote?
I just, I just said after the budget. I don't know, that's why I wouldn't make a promise to the previous speaker because I don't know when we're going to have all the experts and everything lined up. I just know that with the budget the way it is, it's going to be very busy and complex, so it's just going to be after that. So the controller, he spoke to, and I'm not prepared to talk any further about the city manager, the city manager.
Applicants?
Applicants.
We've had many?
Unless any of the other council members would like to, I'm not prepared to.
Anybody want to address the number of applicants we've had, the number of ladies?
I'll address it because this has come up several times. It's been stated at the meeting before that we got about 50 resumes. There was a first round of interviews, which has been completed now. There will now be a second round of face-to-face interviews, some interviews with on my phone for people who aren't local. There'll not be a second round of face-to-face interviews, which from that should be selected in a final game.
Okay, so if I wanted to, I could boil for every single applicant's name, correct? Everything is on record, right? Just clarifying, so. Long Beach. Yeah, okay. And then the other question or statement is to address the lady, but I think she's left, the lady who has lucky enough not to commute anymore, that if we would like recommend that the commanding officers televised like our video team or livestream every single meeting, which is much better than that wonderful paper. So maybe she could watch the commanding officer's meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Pinto.
Please just state your name and address on the record. Sure, Sam Pinto, representing Long Beach firefighters, local to 87. Quick touch on last meeting. Certain resident came up, asked some significant questions, it appeared the council didn't really have that much information before then, so I want to talk on a few of those points on behalf of the union. The first question she asked was about overtime, she had a rumor overtime is out of control. I just want to clarify that it is not under control, out of control, sorry. It is totally in control, actually informed directly by the plan for the city. A few years ago, the city restructured the fire department, hired paramedics to do primary EMS and chose to decrease the amount of frontline firefighters. This was management prerogative and we currently are maintaining 17 firefighters in the books, down from 33, and 17 physicians to benefit. So we are literally at exact number, bare minimum. The city has decided to pay overtime instead of hiring more firefighters on lower costs to fill these vacancies, despite the city's design for where we are, are right now. The commissioner also brought the Supreme Court lawsuit. This lawsuit, the union retracted and came into an agreement with the city. We settled, both sides compromised and agreed to maintain a safe four-man course, paying fire engine at all times. We were able to utilize FLSA exemptions, able to work vacancies instead of being on overtime, we can work in a straight time to benefit the firefighters. We also agreed to adding a secondary control measure of an overtime cap and this is very effective. Frustrating that the union now believes that there was a challenge for a good faith settlement that we are having to now address with, by recent order by the commissioner. Second point was attached, she asked, "Why don't we hire more, for the test out, more firefighters?" The city said it wasn't a plan to do so. As I said before, we are working with limited staff and the guards, so hiring exam was brought up that if there is a preferred list, yes, there is a preferred list of four members that were laid off in 2015. It's set for final expiration February upcoming and this, I were understanding every firefighter who was laid off already has new employment. With that being said, it's very low probability that they will come back and we are told that you can apply for an exam while having a preferred list gaining priority. Exams are normally offered in May and with the Adam exam coming out this year, they'll be avoiding that ineligible list on February 29th. In regards to costs, I think someone in the city said that they cost a lot of money. Civil service exam is historically the money makers for the administrations. They take the revenue from test fees, also the hosting, the foundation costs. With that, they considered, we've also been told finally after that conversation, that the city's not planning on hiring test. It's the city's choice to do so, it's the choice of the city to hire the ICMA when they were validating their restructuring and it's their choice to pay overtime instead of hiring the low-cost firefighters. Third point is ambulance response times, they were asked, real quick, response times have always been good, they have never been a question of they were good or not, they're always above the national standard. Your ICMA report did confirm that. And last, beyond that, the ambulance that the city's using right now for second ambulance by South Nashville, they're actually being subcontracted by a for-profit company called Cedar Care, who does the facility transport. Okay, so just so you know. Um, so just so you know, they are not readily available, like, to the peers, and they're often given priority in the facility transportation compared to being available to residents. Um, is the council having any other questions to make, because we've got some of the topics I brought up?
See, I have a question for you. Uh, of the 17 remaining paid firefighters, um, are any of them near retirement?
Yes, I would say more than half of them. There's no one, there's two guys under 40 still on the job, uh, four or five are eligible for retirement this or next year, and the rest of them are within three or four years retirement eligibility.
So what is the city's plan to replace them? What is the city's plan to replace firefighters as they retire?
You know, we've addressed that problem, that it arises, but you have a preferred list right now, and we believe that somebody's heart completely is just going to be working five seconds. Yeah, boy.
We can hear you, we can hear you.
Okay, well, as we mentioned last time, it was a paperless, and right now, we, whatever vacancies that might arise, and by the way, we've been advised that no vacancies at all, um, when it, if that occurs, we will assess it at that time, but right now, we are.
So, so what would be the process if the four preferred are, let's say, position opens are offered, but let's say they decline it because they already have other employment, what would then be the process to fill an open slot?
The process would be to figure out if we have the financial wherewithal to fill an open slot, that would be the first step.
If you first have to have a list, which you will not have.
But, so, so we're talking about, we're at minimum staffing level now, and we lose firefighters for whatever reason, or firefighters, we have no plan to replace those fire, those firefighters, so the gap would be filled with volunteers?
No, the gap would be filled from the preferred list, we'd go with the preferred list first.
You're missing my point. What I'm saying is, since they're already employed, if those people turn it down, what is the alternative plan to fill vacancies if the preferred list does not have?
Can I just add on to this question? Correct me if I'm wrong, but if there's, if there is a vacancy under the minimum staffing, we have to, until we replace them first, why would we have to back them up, correct?
Well, it's hard to, it's hard to assess that right now, that's a decent possibility, yes, that is a possibility, but also remember, there are other mechanisms to bring, bring personnel aside having a list, you can bring temporary employees under civil service law, there are almost a couple of mechanisms.
So, so would it be an accurate statement to say there is currently no plan beyond the preferred list to fill firefighter, firefighter positions?
That?
I couldn't answer that question. I'm not supposed to, I'm not going to work there.
I know my time is up, I have a question, only because it came up before. Last time we gathered, it was about 1,000 people on the list for the police department, correct?
I, I think that'd be.
All right, so just do the math, 1,000 people passed the exam, obviously, they took it, that's $100,000 if you're given a $100 application fee plus, just on passing. So there's, there's financial benefit for hosting exams historically?
I understand, that's not true, uh, the state collects majority of that money. We get enough to, uh, get the exam, but we don't keep the whole $100, once you go pay certain numbers. I was under that misunderstanding myself.
Time's up.
Thank you, Ms. Pinto. Please state your name and address.
I have a question that I've been asked. Who, uh, the concessioners this year, I heard some not coming back on local?
I think there was a change, I don't know, I think there was a change.
Was there a rate gap when after the ones not coming back?
Well, they were all the contract, they're all under five, I think, five-year contracts.
Oh, so they're all down, okay.
Yes, as far as, as far as we know, as far as I know.
Oh, okay, well, that's how they're, how they're.
If one of the businesses decides not to open, then that's, you know, that's on them, but they all have contracts.
We did, Mary, we did a bid, and we did get some responses, because we were looking to expand, so the bid was more fully expansion than replacing existing, that's what we talked about.
That's what we, that's what we talked about, that's what he's talking about. You're talking about the boardwalk concession.
On the concession, okay, yeah, okay. And the other big thing, um, that has everybody concerned, if you don't want to talk about it, I'm sure, is how financially in debt we are, and how, how do you plan on hearing others? You don't want to talk about it now, okay, but everybody out there is talking about it, whether you want to believe it or not, and if you're looking between 20 and 25 percent with new, um, tax assessments on the home staff away, some people have gone up to 13, 14,000, you want to add another 20, 25,000, why don't you just put the bridges up and let everybody in? Because you people are out of your mind, and we knew this for a very long time. Everybody knew this, because we, the laymen, we all knew it was coming, but we were told, no, 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 we have this and we have that, and he should be ashamed of himself in that sort of thing.
Sorry about that, Mr. Dure. I told my wife, there's an old deal with the government, that this fell out of its ground several times. I just have a couple of questions, I don't know if I can ask them tonight, because some items are tabled. Commissioner, thank you for being here tonight, I mean, I feel well. And correct me upon the law, when you have a federal project related to the boardwalk, my understanding, uh, could be absolutely wrong, that it was completed, the costs or the expenses were submitted, and you get reimbursed probably within a year of somebody signing off and verifying that that project is complete, per the design specs. Is this cost related to tax anticipation note just to get reimbursed for items that came up after the fact? So it's a timing issue. My understanding is the boardwalk is completed, what are expenses, what are future expenses, like, you swallow this plan on a, I don't think they have to do with the bathrooms, so I, I just need a little understanding of that. Could I, could I be told in time, perhaps in two weeks, we could have an answer on that?
I believe it was multiple projects that are already completed. About how many projects?
Well, these projects that are completed, uh, like FEMA. These, these are seven, there's seven projects total, like, these, uh, that we completed the paperwork on, submitted for projects that are complete. Sometimes what we do is, projects that appear completely complete, like the boardwalk, but there's still things going on on the boardwalk, and if we know it's completely done, we don't want to close the project now. As an example, the bathrooms, the original money on the bathrooms, we had five bathrooms done, we were at the end of the project, of the allotment, we didn't close it out, we were able to negotiate another $1.47 million to just rest of the bathrooms. So we're very careful about closing out projects, but these are seven projects that are completed now, well, the paperwork is in, closed out, closed out, there's nothing else that we can do here, we're sure that there's not going to be a lot of money needed for the rest of these projects, so that's why we closed it out. And that's what we look at, we try to close something out that may still need some work on, so.
Okay. Thanks.
One of the things I guess I'd like to clarify on is, um, what we're waiting for basically is revenue reimbursement from the state. Would we?
Well, actually, it's 90% reimbursement from FEMA and 10% reimbursement from the state.
Right, I'm sorry, but, um, I guess where I'm getting, uh, I have a question, is why would this then not be a revenue anticipation note rather than a tax anticipation?
Again, again, that's a decision that the control would make, it would be advised by consultants, and it's not an area that I never bothered, I just do the work in terms of what the project's cost is when it's closed out. We did go to bottom caps, one is, and this is what we would advise.
Any idea why this round? Just seems a little ran versus canned, yeah, is that your question?
My understanding is that, my understanding is that we've exhausted our ability to take out another ramp, and that's why we have to take out the ramp. Good to read. And that's how I knew it was a ramp, it's three years.
So we can't borrow from the law as far as ramps, as far as ran on this particular item?
It's my understanding, it's not general borrowing on a ramp, we already took out a ramp to pay for this project, this is now after, it's the time to pay the ramp, because we believe the loan for this company to come back. We do have the ability with our, as long as, in my understanding.
And we have to lay out more money for the project to build, to get it back in, so we've got, actually, we're using our operating general fund to fund these projects, and that's why we need this one, the full payroll search.
So back, what we ran up, so you said that the full payroll, but before we said this was solely for reimbursing the cost, so if, if there's a shortfall payroll, then this has got an additional function other than reimbursing for?
No, it's, you're, you're mixing two different items. The shortfall is, um, to, to get this job done, and the payroll should be a second thing. We have $4 million right now sitting in the bank to be paid in June, we can't use that for anything. So now, we've spent $4 million through the general fund and stuff to do all this, but they have to reimburse for it. So we need to take it up right now to get us through, so that when we do get reimbursed, we can pay everything back and stay solid.
All right. Okay, that's it for this evening. Thank you for coming, and we'll please leave.